Gotta get it striked. You'll have parking right there.
Yeah, we'll get it.
What? Oh, by red.
I don't want it, I know.
You got your own. Uh, it's wanted. Someone else? Ryan, what's the website that he's looking for? Just you go ahead and get the one.
The one that says Warren Town Meeting?
Yeah. And Hannah, is this eighteen thirty one?
No, no, it's Warren Town, capital N, eighteen thirty one.
All right, I told you to call the meeting door.
Uh.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Got your money, everybody got their money on it. Uh, update on the town hall, the police department. Well, you can see it, they still got a few things they gotta come back and fix. Uh, other than that, it's pretty well done. They're getting some signage up and stuff. Uh, town water project, I see they're working down Park Street over there.
Yep.
Uh, and we're waiting on some electricity out there at the connection.
You had some issues with D V D today, because that doesn't have an address.
For that?
For that fault. I asked them, how am I supposed to give an address for a concrete structure? Not really our property, it's just an easement.
Right.
So they finally, they took care of it, yeah.
All right, so we're just waiting on to get it inspected.
It's already.
Oh, he showed up and showed back there? Okay, good deal, good deal. All right, so they're just heading down Park Street now. It looks like it's a slow go down there.
Yeah, they had to do a casing, because of storm structure and the sewer. So they got the casing done Friday, they ran the water running through the casing, how their other cases. They put in a new casing, air reconstruction.
Wow, that's gonna take another day.
They're gonna be on fire all month.
Yeah. Well.
That's your street penny.
Yeah.
All right, uh, reading signs pay application number six, that's this big one right here. Uh, I think they're down that. One hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars and seventy four cents. Do, if I wanna make a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, approve that, uh, pay application.
Oh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We got another there. This is the reading, uh, police in Vanderbrink, this is for the work at the park.
We're gonna do that.
For the park improvements.
We're gonna do that.
Yeah, we're gonna put this off to our next meeting, September meeting, because we'll have one before the end of the year. So we're just gonna put this on hold till then, that way money will come out after the first few years. All right, uh, roads construction final payment. We can go ahead and approve this final payment, but we're not ready to pay it until they actually finish the punch list and finish the work. Hopefully they'll be getting that done over the next week or so. But we could go ahead and approve to pay it upon completion of the punch list and the work necessary to get the job finished.
And then they're still responsible for a year after.
That's right, that's right. If we have any issues.
I'll make a motion that we approve this, um, based on the punch list, once they're complete, so can Sharon now get that paid? I'll second.
I'll second, say aye.
Aye.
And that's a sixteen thousand, five hundred and eighty-one seventy-eight. All right, the phrasals, uh, we're still waiting on them. Should have them back next week or so, so hopefully at the next meeting, we can see where we're at on that.
Come on.
Uh, it's for the old valley, old town hall, we have to have a phrase, see what value of it is. Oh, maybe sell it.
Can you sell it later?
I wasn't aware there was a designation. Yes, I don't think they sell it. I think that just relates to changes.
Okay, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash seven amendment. Uh, please.
So I.
Do what? Go ahead, Lee.
Well, no, you'll see it's a twenty twenty-four number, but it is, the reason is, it's an amendment of the twenty twenty-five salary.
Okay, I did see down here on, uh, on the front, first page, the last where I had, uh, compensation paid to town clerk, treasurer, utility clerk for various town bonds.
Uh, new, yeah.
Yeah, we gotta need that new.
So it ends at work.
Okay, all right.
So you want, we, there's not a vehicle?
Yeah, there is a vehicle, and it should end at work, should be a period right after work from work. And, yeah.
So it's hanging.
Just take out and allocate.
To and from work.
That's it.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Yeah.
I see it. I don't know how that, oh, because we were doing two, I, I see what, okay.
Good catch. I think we can do it with that change.
I get it, I get it too.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash seven with that, that change.
All in favor, say aye. Right, uh, we got the AIM medical trust health insurer, let's just wait for a minute, we'll get back to that. The ordinance twenty twenty-five dash eight, it's a salary ordinance. This is the updated salary ordinance based on the numbers we gave Lee, or gave Sharon at the, our last meeting.
Now, can I just have?
And, yeah, there was some changes maybe in the longevity. I think we decided it was the number of years that's, that's wrong there. They should each be one year longer.
Yeah, that is.
Then the number would be correct.
Yeah, you can have that, but it's everybody. It's just they get it at different rates if they're part-time. Um, they get half if they're part-time, and then they get the full amount if they're full-time. No, uh, no.
And I don't see Dustin White on there.
Or David Simon.
Or David Simon.
We're gonna add, add those.
Okay, you're gonna add those? Okay.
David is, David is a D P W worker.
Okay.
Who else did we say David?
Uh, David and Dustin White.
Dustin.
Dustin White.
He's gonna hurt my home.
Oh, he's been here over a year.
Okay. I think he's in his second year. He's in his second year, okay.
Um, and two, Lee, I didn't know if this was possible, um, to maybe reference ordinance twenty twenty-four dash five with that, because, um,
Through the explanation?
Yeah, just for the explanation of how they're paid, and then, uh, I told Sharon it'd be nice, because some of the, the reason why they're in there is they look so different is that some of these years, like Becky started out part-time, now she's full-time, so we have like a little column here on the left with part-time and their years, and then full-time, and then reference that ordinance. I think that'd be good, is that okay?
Yeah, reference twenty twenty-four oh five.
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
Twenty twenty-four dash five, yeah, and then do like a part-time column and a full-time column.
But we don't have any, I, I think I took that out first, like, we don't have any part-time issues, do we?
Oh, yeah, we got Jared Smith, who's part-time.
Yeah.
He is.
And Becky. Becky did start out part-time, so we would need.
That would also be right here.
Okay.
So, okay.
We pay them half.
So Sharon, do you know what all the numbers mean?
Yeah.
I think that they should, these numbers are correct, based.
The years of service right there, yeah. Yeah, okay. Yeah, John should be three, and Kyle five.
Oh.
And, yeah, and Ryan ten, like that.
Okay.
And, and, and I, I mean, I would just make a motion that those changes are made just to, to double verify all the amounts, and when you get to Dustin and David on there, that the amounts are correct.
But the ordinance except for the longevity phase, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, so I'll make those corrections and get it down here to go to sign.
Okay.
Day along with twenty twenty-four oh seven.
Ryan, just wanna wait on the corrections, if you guys wanna pass it, those corrections.
I'm gonna tell you, we didn't pass one with the corrections. I'll make a motion that we, that we pass for twenty twenty-five dash eight with the corrections.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This is resolution twenty twenty-five sixteen, uh, authorized additional progress in twenty twenty-five, actually, this is kinda backing up here a little bit, uh, this is money we previously transferred from twenty twenty-five, we're gonna put it back in, because we was gonna need that money for part of the street repairs and, and that right there, so uh, that's what this is for. Uh, general fund twenty thousand, and back into co-edit, one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six.
I make a motion that we approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash sixteen, I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. All right, now, this is the twenty twenty-five eighteen, this is the agreement for the AIM uh, insurance. Uh, we, we talked about that at the last meeting.
Joe, go, Joe, hang on just a sec, I'm, I'm looking, that was sixteen that you just said?
Yes.
We're calling it additional appropriation, right?
Right.
So, we notice the public hearing, we need actually, we need to open a public hearing.
Open a public hearing for that part?
Give the public opportunity, and then after that, close the public hearing.
All right, we're gonna open a public hearing for the additional appropriations for resolution twenty twenty-five dash one six.
What is it?
Which is, which is the main?
Yeah, sorry. It, it, the, uh, additional appropriations for fund, general fund would be twenty thousand, and the co-edit is one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six. From what it is, is money we had previously looked out of the budget for twenty twenty-five, looked at another year, we could draw on that money, and we realized we probably shouldn't have done that, so we're bringing it back into twenty twenty-five to use part of it for, uh, engineering on the roads and, uh, some other things. Yeah, it's not scrolling away, it's just money we do, it would still be spent, it's gonna be spent either this year or next year, you know, those are years. Huh? Well, I don't, I doubt we'll use all that money, you know, it's just going back into budget, we'll probably end up, you know, I doubt we'll use all of it, so, some of it will still go into budget. All right, anybody got any questions? Uh, was never earmarked for project, no, no, was never earmarked, we just, it was gonna be excess money we had this year that we's moving it to using the future, but we realized we're gonna need some of it this year, so we just went ahead and moved it back.
And we may not need all of it, we don't.
Yeah, it's just going back in the budget, it's not that we're gonna spend.
It's all in the bank, um.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, and then that's basically the adjustment right there.
If it helps, too, as a matter of budgeting for public, political, cities, towns, counties. It's, it's, it, it's not a matter of whether you have the money or don't have the money, every year through the budget process, the approved budget gives the council the authority to spend so much money in that budget year. And so, the town has had this money all along. The town originally backed, we did our twenty twenty-five budget, planned on this money being available to be spent in twenty twenty-five, so within the twenty twenty-five budget. There was a point through the year where the decision was made, no, we're not gonna need it. So, we decided to remove it from the twenty twenty-five budget. Then as the year went on, and expenses became real, the council had made a decision, oh, we need to free up that money, we need to take the lid off that job. Right, the money's been in there the whole time, we had to put off, put the lid back on, we gotta take the lid back off again, because we need some of it to spend in twenty twenty-five. So by approving this resolution, the town simply is making it available to be spent in this budget year. Otherwise, it would carry over, it would still be the town's money, it would be available to be spent in twenty twenty-six, but we need to dip into it and spend some of it in twenty twenty-five. So that's what this formal action of the council does. It just takes a little, right? That make sense?
Yeah.
Good.
Anybody ask any questions? All right, I'll close the public hearing. And, uh, no, one hit, it's already voted on it.
Yeah.
All right, twenty twenty-five to fifteen, back to the AIM insurance, and Jewel, it answered everybody's question, I think, that we had at the last meeting, so. Uh, what, okay, what's the index, Jewel?
Um, so, um, me and Sharon had another little class today, Zoom, with AIM, just going over some of the information for employees, so the employees are gonna be getting, um, emails coming out soon, and they're gonna be able to go online and set up their, their plan, and who's gonna be on their plans. So all of this is gonna take, take effect in December, so we have, uh, there's a training class that, um, there is like a little training class online that you guys will take, and it just tells, explains everything, what you can do with your insurance, how you can get in there and look at everything, so. This has helped, so we changed the AIM, which, I don't know if you was at the last meeting, Penny?
No.
Um, and I, and I don't have the numbers right in front of me, but it saved us, do you remember how many thousands of dollars, uh?
It was fourteen or fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, that we saved going through AIM. Yeah, which is through the state, and so there's a lot of, there's a lot of cities and towns that are joining that, and the more that join that, the better insurance that the employees get, and the cheaper the rates are usually.
Yeah, yeah, that's what. Sharon, you still have that, uh, policy that.
Uh, the town, the town pays for my insurance, yes. I can't, I can't, because I'm on Medicare, I have to have something, I cannot be on their Anthem insurance, or whatever, United, or whatever.
Who said that?
It's so, I, it's.
All right, you might wanna make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five eighteen, give me permission soon.
Make the motion.
Anybody here? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Uh, update on the C C M G, this is the street project, so, yeah, they, uh, finished the letter, turned us down from the street. But they said they had, they called me, it looked like they're gonna have some money left over out of some other projects, and I'm, we're number four on the list, and as they get enough money to fill, keep, to fill the revenue for our project, we'll still be able to get on the project.
Did you understand, were we, were we approved, but there just wasn't a sufficient funding, or did we?
No, we were not, we were turned down because.
And you know why?
Yes, why? The, there's a box checked on our application that says the planning wasn't complete, so if your planning's not complete, you automatically just qualify. So I, I said, well, the planning is complete, we're just waiting to send it out for bids, so I don't know how that got checked, uh, so.
Sounds like you're probably.
Yeah, so I've talked to Chad at, at Vanderbrink, and I think we, we gotta, if they call me back and they get the revenue, we'll be able to George Street project. She, they will be calling me back, so, to let me know. So if not, we'll just shove it down the road for July, if that everything ready to commit July, so, you know, we'll be on the project, yeah. We did get, I did get our asset inventory updated with LTAP. It's like two thousand points of data I'd put into that. That's the form, quite extensive, but I did get it, it's probably more accurate than that, I'd say. Yes, we got it in there, uh, uh, that's pretty well, and how about Park Board, Jewel?
Well, the Park Board did not have enough members to meet, so they did not have a.
So we're still moving forward with the grant?
We are, we should know something in February whether we're gonna get the D N R grant.
Right. Minutes for council meeting November the tenth of twenty twenty-five. By the minutes?
On the tenth, there's just, um, one correction on page three. With my name.
Yeah. Little bit, bottom top, top paragraph. Lot of bait.
That's okay, I love to.
All right, that was it. Want to approve it with correction?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve, um, for November the tenth of twenty twenty-five, and I second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Minutes dated November the thirteenth of twenty twenty-five.
I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes from November thirteenth of twenty twenty-five, second.
All in favor, say aye. Ten minutes for the special meeting held November the nineteenth, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We got. Council payable, here.
I'll make a motion, we approve the council payable, I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. The payable document, dated December the eighth, twenty twenty-five. Make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Then we got the bank reconciliation.
I'll make a motion that we approve the bank reconciliation, I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. Get the water fund here. Uh, we're, we're not doing that bad, come back down a little. We did have a couple other invoices turned in from roommates, uh, we had them clean the building, and it was three hundred dollars.
We possibly may back charge this.
To the, to the destructive company, we're gonna have a discussion with the.
Yeah, because we feel like it should have been something they did at the end, but they did bring the company in, uh, but it was.
A lot of dollars, probably committed to touch out all that, dust everywhere.
But I'll make a motion that we approve the three hundred dollars for, to roommate cleaning company.
Yeah. Uh, pending some paperwork we gotta get from them too, right, here, document nine.
Oh, oh, pending, okay, pending is W nine, okay.
All in favor, say aye. And we got, uh, the graphics, this is all the graphics that was done in the building, uh, we already approved the fee, it was three thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars and sixty-five cents, just need to prove the payment. So this is for all the graphics, uh, this logo, there's a logo there, and the graphics on the door, the drop box.
It was for the graphics, it, it's for the windows.
Oh, this is for the windows?
Yes.
Oh, this includes the windows, oh, that's, that's this, oh, these are two different window bits, okay, hold on a minute. So this is for the graphics.
Well, we just got this tonight.
All right, this is for the windows, and what it is, the top one is for the perforated window tent, and the bottom one is for the mirrored tent. And, uh, me and Ryan talked about it, probably gonna be the mirrored tent would be our best choice, uh, probably for all of us.
They, they just applied that mirrored tent to the new, uh, county, the Justice Center, that they're using, um, and then if anybody goes to the library in downtown, they buried it apart, so I'm sorry, they've used a lot of the perforated, uh, window film.
Yeah. Well, the just a mirrored tent is two thousand, twenty-one, sixty-five.
And the perforated is sixteen, twenty-five.
Also, did expect the, um, the, the actual window film to last longer, because when it's installed, it's installed behind the seal, where they can't get the vinyl perforated behind that, so it actually stays, stays longer, so there's a little bit more money, but they're giving more life.
Yeah. Anybody wanna make a motion? Approve the little tent?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
The mirror tent?
The mirror tent.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
And then just one follow-up question to that, uh, it's on this floor, you, were you guys wanting this one to go down as well? So I can find it now.
I.
Leave that.
You want that one down?
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess just go along.
And the sun, that, that, we, like.
Yeah, the winter line, be in here at that time of day. But see, there is, uh, we will need to schedule another meeting, uh, this, this month, around December the 29th. Uh, once you guys get on that. I don't know, eight.
One, two, this is.
It's the usual time, six o'clock.
Oh, you wanna do like the 29th of Monday?
29th of Monday, yes. Well.
29th of December, and what, six o'clock?
Yeah.
Do you get that, Lee? Or does Lee have to be here for that?
It's just your final document?
Yes, it's that final document.
Okay.
I won't take the minutes into it. And I don't think we had any utility adjustments this month.
No.
Which is, which is, yeah. We will need to be taking care of the locks on the doors, right? Uh, what do you, what do you remember about that?
So, uh, I reached out, tried to do some research for a local locksmith, found out, I believe, well, Spikes in Martinsville had actually sold out to a place in Greenwood that the fire department used, uh, contacted them about getting keys for the building. They're actually supposed to come tomorrow, if, if you guys are all right with that, and, um, the pricing on it would be, they charge them at one time $120 service charge. Each key is $3.76. From everything that we've searched through, we do not have a key to that side door. So it'd cost $40 for that, to get that, uh, key, but we'd have access to it. And then while they were here, I'd like them to be able to do some sort of master key setup. And Joe and I talked about it, and I would like to see the council approve keying these two doors alike on the exterior, that way if, um, other boards or, um, members of the public that work through the council wanted to have access to this meeting room, this should be the only area that they would have access to. Leave the front door keyed separately. The, uh, the door that has the exit sign above it, the door that comes in from the lobby, also they access the utility, we'd have all three of those keyed the same. Key the two police department doors the same and then do a, a master key build off of the, the mark of the office to allow them to have access anywhere in the, in the building. So, I think that's seven interior locks and they, they charge $18 to, to key them alike to operate the master key system. So they, uh, they can come as soon as tomorrow to do, um, a side inspection. It sounds like they'd be able to do the work on Wednesday.
It, it's right around five o'clock. Right. Great key. Allow access to, you know, here, to make the.
I think, I think we need to do that.
But we will be having our meetings for the, I don't know, here, or, and our someone to talk to fire department. So, the reason that's law service. So, if everybody's okay with it, we just, uh, you know, improve the budget maybe up to $600. Get the lock down.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve up to $600. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. And what else, what do you got? Yeah, good.
I got something. Um, so, the digital sign update, um, training is, training is set for the 23rd, but they're gonna be here, I think, on the 18th of this month to install our sign, our digital sign. Because we won't have our training, they're gonna like set the sign up just to have like the American flag and it may say some things, you know, maybe about the town hall, they'll kind of program that for us. And then, um, um, our IT guy, myself, Sharon and Becky will all be trained, taking the training class to be able to, um, to program the sign.
This is it?
Yes, yes. That's just a digital sign like the church put out in front of their.
Maybe a little better than that.
It is not the same one, they did not buy from the same company.
Yeah, yeah, a little bit different, politics like.
And they got their, they got their, they got that in color, it's hard to read that because they're using colors, yeah. Yeah, it is hard to read. Um, the other thing that I had. Yeah. The other thing that I had is that we had had, um, donations by someone in the community for, uh, the holidays, for decorations, and since we have a, um, new town hall, I wanted to, so we have a thou, a thousand dollars in that fund that was donated, and not that we need a thousand dollars, but I wanted to, because, um, it'd be nice for the girls to be able to decorate the lobby and stuff and, um, have, be able to go and shop and decorate for the holidays. And, um, I wasn't gonna give them a limit because they're not, they're not gonna spend a thousand dollars, but just to allow them to spend out of that fund to decorate the building. If that's okay with you guys. Yeah. Right? I'm done, that's all I have.
Yeah, that's all you got?
Um, we need some salt. So I live with the, 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 and we can get up to 26 ton, or we can get to 70% of 26 ton. I don't know how much, I think we could get to $2,400.
Yeah.
I'm gonna need all $2,400.
Is it gonna get us 26 ton?
That's the thing, that they don't tell you the price.
They don't tell you the price, tell you get there.
Yeah.
All right, yeah, I'd say, probably, that's what we got in, this year, I'd say, probably smart going to get it because probably gonna get it this year.
That's it, what we already said.
And how much was that?
$24,000, that's in the salt, I think.
So we need the motion?
Yeah, well, yeah, we just don't pay the spending, I would go ahead and make a motion too. We've allowed Congress to spend the $24,000 budget, the salt. Yeah, I'll make.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So you got, Lee, you got anything?
Just a warm-up, we're great.
All right, well, I guess we'll be back here on the 29th of December, six o'clock.
Thanks.
And the meeting's adjourned.
The, the, the 29th, right?
Yeah, I can.